All right, um, welcome to the Tuesday, December seventeenth Select Board Meeting for the Town of Georgetown. Um, this meeting is being recorded for YouTube. And um, we're gonna call it to order at seven oh five.
Six oh five.
Six oh five, that's right. And I guess first off, is there any public comment?
I will say that that it's six oh two according to computer. Yeah, just so you all know that.
Public comment? Okay.
In general.
Yeah, I got.
Yes, that's the, and basically that's what I think most of you guys.
Uh, Dave. Dave Pilito, Dave Pilito is asking to comment.
Online.
Thank you, Brown. And just a reminder.
It's good, basically, three.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Keep it quick, that way it'll go fast. Um, I saw your hands go up first before I saw Dave, so I'll take Sarah and then Jimbo, and then I'll take Dave after that, and then we'll work from there.
I just want to say. Uh, I have no issue with the four-wheelers on the road. I'd prefer that they stop at Tommianas house, because there's no need for them to go any further, but I don't want them going in front of my house, the noise and all that. Other than that, I have no issue.
Thanks.
Jimbo, you raise your hand. I just want to say, we live in the best place in the world. That's great, John. Thanks. Uh, Dave?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I did, uh, I, I see in the, uh, in the minutes that you were gonna speak to the issue of four-wheelers on the town roads and, uh, I just wanted to say that I think the state guidelines on operating ATVs on public ways are pretty reasonable. And, uh, I'd like to see the town adhere to those. I think if you open one town road up and make an exception, you're gonna wind up having to make the same exception on all the town roads. We have a lot of tight curves. We have a lot of, uh, steep climbs where visibility is, uh, limited and, uh, narrow roads, and I just think that the hazard of, uh, operating ATVs on town roads is not worth it. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've gotten one.
All right. I stand up?
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Mark Lyons. Uh, I'm from the Marktown Road. I also have no objection to, uh, the town designating the Marktown Road as a designated ATV route, but I do have some questions, and I would also like the town to impose reasonable conditions uh, on the, on the route. Um, I've taken a look at the statute, also read the net about the main municipal association, uh, guidelines on establishing designated ATV routes. Um, it just requires you to do a safety study. I'm sure you've already done that. Requires, you know, restrictions that the ATVs be on the, to the extreme right of the road. I don't know if that's really possible on the Marktown Road, but um, and, um, also requires the town post signs at reasonable intervals. Uh, I've got a picture of the sign from the MMA website if you'd like to take a look. And then the only other condition I respectfully request is that the designated route end at Mamiyanas driveway. Otherwise, I have no, no problem with the designated route.
Anybody else?
Um, I've met some of you. My name is Kelsey Data. I work for the nature conservancy, so I'm here as landowner representative for, um, adjacent land. Um, my, so I have no concern, we have no concern with, um, the road being an ATV access. Our concern is that there are old roads that have been used by ATVs for many years, uh, within the Berry Preserve where they're not allowed. Um, and this last year, as I did the monitoring, there was, um, increased ATV use, and so my concern, our concern is that if that road is used as an access road, that that would bring in more activity into the Berry Woods Preserve where we do not allow ATV access.
Is it clearly marked and all that kind of stuff where you go into those, I'm just curious?
Um, this last year, and I do have pictures from the monitoring report, we do have no ATV access. Everywhere we do put a lot of blockages on all of those, um, at our entry points, and they're always moved out of the way. There's been a lot of erosion. Um, the trails have gotten much wider than they have been in the past from ATV is kind of going around the wet spots. Yes.
Want me to comment on that?
Go for it.
Wait, wait up, wait, where is this?
Pass it down.
Absolutely.
Um, I have a map. Are you, are you asking where's the Berry Woods Preserve? Are you asking where the ATVs are accessing, accessing the preserve?
No, I'm well aware of where that is.
Yeah.
I want to see if that's just, um. Well, that's, that's really kind of a side thing that doesn't affect this, this particular thing. I mean, at this point, that would fall under more of a um, enforcement, rules, enforcements and stuff like that. I would, you know, so that's it, it, yes, it, the, kind of affects it that way, but that would be more of an enforcement thing and, um, that really doesn't fall under my purviews as such, so. Um, but I, I understand, uh, the issue that's coming up with that and, uh, you know, just have to deal with it as it happens, I guess. Um, beyond that, is there anything, do you, do you want me? Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking, sorry.
No, no, I'm listening.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Nope, sorry, Bronwyn.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I want to remind everybody that this is not a public hearing. This is a public comment. The Select Board is listening to your comments individually, but it's not a debate back and forth. It's just comment, and it's all, what we have to decide in the course of this meeting is a very limited decision, which is not about a particular preserve, or it is about the impact, the potential impact of allowing this change in the designation of the road. So, that, that's just, I, I'm so appreciative that so many people came out. It's, it's interesting to know that this issue is broader than just the one we've been presented with. Because already there've been two or three comments that indicate that there's a larger issue. And I had no idea that that was the case. Um, that's just, that's my public comment, I guess, John.
The public comment is that, um.
And if you could state your name just for the folks that may not know.
Yana Sheen, where the public access will end at our driveway. Um, I want everyone to know that nothing is really gonna change. These ATVs have been maintaining the woods, the trails, what have you, cotton firewood for decades. There's not going to be a racetrack. There's not gonna be an invitation for other ATVs to be there, as there's no place for them to go. It's just a way to make it safe and legal for people to access the big landowners and the ones that are helping them to take care of.
Sorry, I've already commented, but I, I have a question again, Mark Lyons of Marktown Road. You gonna designate part of the West Georgetown Road as a ATV route to?
That was not. Was not part of the request.
Okay, that's, okay. Just, I'm just curious.
Any more comments? Not really, well, I guess. Well, thank you for that, and we will move on to the rest of the meeting at this point.
There were no items to be added to the agenda tonight, though I will flag for the board that we were in receipt of a letter from Bill Webster with specific requests to the Select Board. That'll be on a future Select Board agenda. It came in today, so we couldn't put it on this one. And we have no scheduled appointments, though I will note, before we get to assessing items, with the board's pleasure or permission, I would like to let the chief give his update, because he has another commitment tonight as well, and he has comments relative to one of our decisions. And so, other than that, we're on to the minutes, and again, when we get to assessing items, we jump to the chief.
I'd move to, um, allow the, uh, agenda to be reordered to, from five for Chief Whalen's comments.
Second.
Right, in favor? Perfect. All right, and the first item.
I move, I move approval of the minutes of November nineteenth and December third.
Second to both.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. A unanimous vote on those slated minutes. You were provided with an updated hauling numbers digitally as well as some November financials. And with that, if Chief Whalen is ready, I would turn this over to him.
Great, thanks Taylor, and, uh, thanks to the Select Board for, uh, allowing me to move up tonight. Uh, unfortunately, I had another, uh, appointment come up last minute, and, uh, so this is, uh, allowing me to work everything in tonight, so I appreciate it. Um, so I'm just gonna start in on the Fire Department update here, since our last update last month. Um, Georgetown Fire Department responded to eleven calls for service over the last month. Uh, eight of those were emergency medical calls, and, uh, three of them were, uh, otherwise, uh, fire type calls. Uh, one of them, which was a, a fire in a house, uh, which was thankfully extinguished by the homeowner before, um, we arrived on scene, so it was, uh, uh, lucky that we got that, uh, taken care of the way it did, but, uh, it was a close one. So, uh, that puts us at a hundred seventy-one calls for the year as of, uh, today. And that makes us, as of right now, our third highest call volume year, uh, ever, and, uh, with, uh, six more calls, we'll bump to number two, so. We're, uh, we're getting, we, we may get there before the end of the year, depending on how the weather goes, really. Um, so that's what we did for calls in the last, uh, last month or so. And, uh, on the fifth of December, we held an informational session at the Historical Society. And, uh, we, uh, wanna thank everybody who came out, uh, in person and online to that. Uh, we had a really good turnout, or I was, I was happy with the turnout. We had about, uh, twenty-five plus people, uh, in person in the room, and other seventeen or eighteen online. Uh, and then since then, we've had thirty-six, uh, views of the YouTube video online, which, uh, means that people are interested and, and looking at it, so. Uh, I'm very fortunate for that, so, um, we had excellent dialogue. We had some really good questions. And, uh, I'm really glad for that, and, uh, we're looking to do another one upcoming, maybe the next, uh, month or so, sometime in January, I'm looking at. Uh, working on the exact date. Um, some possible topics to include coming up at this next one would be, uh, EMS coverage options. Um, talk about some vehicle replacement schedules, um, new membership, or, you know, getting new members to join the department, that kind of thing. And, uh, possibly EMS billing, things like that, so looking at that, uh, for January, and, uh, as soon as we get some dates settled in, we'll get that information out to everybody who is interested. Um, speaking of new members, we have had, uh, I personally spoken with, uh, six people in the last, uh, month or so who have expressed interest in joining the department, and that is phenomenal. Um, so we're working with them, and I've heard rumors through the grapevine, there might be a few more interested. Um, not that, uh, I haven't been contacted yet, but, uh, you know, looking forward to that, so, um, look at it, some new membership coming in, and, uh, we'll be working on getting them, uh, up to speed in the next, uh, as soon as we can here, so. Uh, we're still working on the details, but, uh, things are looking up in that direction, so. Um, if anyone is interested or knows anyone that might be interested, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, you can contact myself. Um, cell phone, email, whatever. Um, find a way to get ahold of them, pretty easy to find, so, thanks. Um, and, uh, yeah, in reference to the ATV access on Marktown Road, um, I've been approached, uh, by a few people to discuss the, the topic. And from a, uh, Fire Department response and safety aspect, uh, Georgetown Fire Department doesn't have any, uh, objections to an ATV designation on Marktown Road from a purely emergency response perspective. Um, as far as I'm concerned, if the, uh, ATVs are on the road and we need to have an emergency response down there, they are more narrow and, uh, more maneuverable than a regular automobile, and as we all know, Marktown Road is a very narrow, very windy road, so that gives them actually a higher ability to move over and, uh, out of the way of emergency vehicles. Um, as long as everyone is, uh, using, following all the safety precautions and all the rules, and operating their, their vehicles prudently, uh, ATVs and otherwise, um, we don't have any safety concerns, um, with that road having that access, so. Um, the road designed by itself includes pretty much any high-speed driving whatsoever in any kind of vehicle, so, um, that's, uh, again, like I said, from a safety aspect, uh, not something we're looking at right now, so. If anybody has any questions or concerns, I'd be glad to answer and address them.
Just to ask a quick one, Brian, in the event that a safety concern did occur on the Marktown Road, you would definitely communicate with the Select Board and the Town Office so we could address that, correct?
Yeah, if there was any concerns or if we had, uh, an incident, uh, we could actually absolutely, uh, discuss that at that time, and we can discuss that, that instance specifically. I don't wanna necessarily generalize, um, further than that, but yeah, that's what we can do.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Brian. Great job with that informational program.
Yeah, I agree.
And for anybody that is on Zoom or in person that you did not make it to the informational program, if you go to youtube.com slash the at sign Georgetown ME, you can watch that and all of these wonderful Select Board meetings as well. And so the next item of business was an abatement request from Susan Hess at twelve sixty-seven Five Islands Road, map and lot eleven U, lot two. Miss request, Miss Hess had requested an abatement to her assessment requesting that the land valuation be reduced from two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and her building valuation be reduced to one hundred and seventeen thousand. Her rationale included having a water view but not direct access to Harmon's Harbor, her belief that her property size was unbuildable, the number of bedrooms, only having one full bathroom, no garage, and being reliant on a wood stove. As with all abatements, the Town Office looks into those initial findings and then compares with different like properties, and just for the record, uh, Miss Hess is not currently assessed in the Harmon's Harbor neighborhood and is not assessed for having water access. The property, while under our two-acre minimum, is a grandfathered lot and would be buildable, provided it met setbacks and shoreland zoning requirements. The number of bedrooms in our records were inaccurate. We had three versus the two, however, bedrooms do not impact the net assessment on properties. Miss Hess was only assessed for having that one bathroom. There was no garage, and a wood stove is the heating system in that building. We did compare, uh, Miss Hess's property with a handful of others in the Route one twenty-seven neighborhood, as well as across the way in Harmon's Harbor and over onto Oak Road.
Can I just stop you right there?
Yes.
So, as a matter of course, I don't remember. I don't remember this happening before, but obviously I was not on the Select Board. I was just watching the meetings, but for every time you have an abatement request, you do a property, um, comparison like this, okay? And I probably just didn't know that, so thank you.
Well, and last year, we didn't have as many abatement requests, because this year, I think we had, anticipate a little bit more than usual. And it does take a bit of work here at the office to compare. I would note that on the properties that we compared with, with Miss Hess, her one-acre home site, on the land, I wanna make sure I'm using the correct terminology, the land description of which is the base that we then calculate into the formula, she was at seventy-five thousand per acre, fifteen thousand site improvement. The one difference with her property compared to the other like properties was the level of her view factor. Not every town, property in Georgetown has a view factor. Some have higher ones and lower to make sure the net assessment gets close to where it should be. I would note that her view factor of seven started out at a base of seventy thousand dollars, but after the reassessment work did increase the power, has a net assessed value of one hundred and twenty-six thousand. I'd say that from my determinations comparing twenty-four Harmon's Harbor Road, Four Harbor Way, and I just flagged on Four Harbor Way, while the home set, the acreage was a little bit higher, it had the same land description value at seventy-five thousand an acre. It falls into that Route one twenty-seven neighborhood, and I would just note that building without electric, without water, and without sewer is currently assessed at eighty-four thousand eight hundred, and so I would say going through the other properties, forty-four Oak Road, twelve forty-three Five Islands Road, that based on these comparisons, it's my opinion that this abatement should be denied. However, if the board did want to revisit the view factors specifically, I'd encourage tabling this pending review from Mr. Van Tynan, though I do believe the numbers stand up.
And I did note that she, uh, asked for a link for tonight to attend the meeting, Susan Hess did.
And I spoke with Miss Hess this morning, and unfortunately, there was a death in her family, and she is driving to Philadelphia right now.
All right, so she's not able to, okay.
So I turn this over to the board for comments, thoughts, questions, or a, a motion.
I, I'd move to actually table it, because I'd like to, I'd like for the homeowner to be available, and I don't think that the, um, you know, particularly if we're inclined to deny it based on the comps. Um, I'd like her to be able to hear our reasoning, and I think it's a courtesy which we should offer to anyone given circumstances, is to allow them to participate, and given what we know about her lack of participation and the reason therefore, I'd feel more comfortable if we tabled it. That's just me.
What could we also?
I'll second that. If that's a motion, I'll second.
It was, thank you.
Okay, and I, I fully think that's a great idea. I will say, in talking with Miss Hess this morning, she did understand that if the process did carry forward, that, you know, she was comfortable with that, but I do agree that if we can get a little bit more digging too on the view factor in the meantime, I think that'd be a helpful.
I as well. Yeah, I just, you know, just gives the full picture, so if there is gonna be, um, a decision, uh, taking into all those factors, we can back it up with the view factor as well.
Absolutely, so.
I moved, I moved it for it, yeah.
All in favor? I'm in favor of it.
All right, so it was three to vote a table. Aria had made the motion, seconded by Bronwyn.
Thank you for that recitation, though, Tyler.
Hey, and I'm thankful I got to practice tonight, because we have a few of these. We have one property owner with seven properties that we will be dealing with in the near future, so for what that is worth.
Right.
In our packet, we provided folks with several items of correspondence, central main power. I wanted to share with the board their update with the planning that went into the December eleventh storm, and while we in Georgetown were spared big outages, CMP was ready, willing, and able to get us switched back on. I also wanted to include in your packet a bulletin from the Main Municipal Association, just outlining the closeout process for ARPA, and how while we have to commit items and contract by the end of the year, we have until April when they reopen the portal to close out. Tedford Housing had sent along their annual report, and for anyone interested, I have a copy here at the office. And United Way of Maine put out a flyer about Cash Maine, and I just wanna flag for folks that Cash Maine is a service and organization that will actually help folks file their taxes for free, and starting July, uh, January fifteen, folks can make appointments. And in particular, it's important to flag Cash Maine, because they are the group that will be helping folks tackle those two replacement programs to the senior property tax freeze, or the stabilization program rather, that was repealed. So Cash Maine, anybody that wants those resources, we can get them headed that way. And we had funding requests from the Sweetser and the Island Institute. There were no other items of correspondence, and I had no continuing items. And I would turn this over to board members for their committee member updates, and then I promise we're getting to the fun stuff soon, guys. So this is all riveting.
Oh, I had two meetings, um, since the last, uh, Select Board meeting, yeah, well, yeah, two meetings today, um. The, uh, Planning Board is working on a questionnaire as far as the, um, accessory, or accessory dwellings? Yeah, accessory dwellings, um, and how it's affecting, uh, how, or short-term rentals, excuse me, short-term rentals. They're still working on getting the questionnaire straightened out, figuring that out. And, um, today, met with the TOPMB, and, um, they're, uh, working on getting their, um, what they're fixing and what they're gonna get going and stuff like that, and they actually asked me a question about, um, they are trying to clean up and put away the stuff down at Todd's Landing, and there are a couple of unaccounted-for kayaks, and they have, they have the ability and the ordinance to remove them, but they were wondering about safe storage. Is that something we could actually put in the basement of the first church to keep them? Um, I don't think, I'm curious of any reason why we couldn't put them there.
The only hesitation that I'd have is that kayaks are gonna be wet anyway, but the humidity is bad, and there was some mold issues in the building, but the basement, six of one half.
Can't be any worse than sitting out on them.
Right.
In the snow. So I mean, that, and that way, that's, they're at least under lock and key and aren't likely to get, um, taken from some other place, so. If that's, if that's okay, I'll just let them know.
I have no problem with it, but it is true that there's a lot of mold in the building, and people have been telling me that there was a lot of mold in the basement before the sheet rock was removed and the, the cement floor was poured. Um, so it's probably equally bad, at least as it was before, but maybe there are material that will wash right off when it goes into the water again.
Yeah. Okay, no, that's all I, basically all I have right there.
John, can I ask a question? So is the Planning Board's, um, questionnaire gonna go out to all of us citizens? What, what is the questionnaire designed for?
Well, uh, the impact and trying to get a feel for, uh, short-term rentals, and that, that, they are still in the, just the, seeing what and if it is really a issue or what, you know, they're, they're still trying to wrap their heads around it, so it's still, um, work in progress.
And, and, um.
But, uh, I think mostly they wanna get a mail into the whole town as far as I'm sure.
Okay, that's what I saw. Okay, thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you, John. Aria or Bronwyn?
Um, the, the Solid Waste Committee, um, met last week, and, uh, we, we have an issue still with substitute transfer station attendance. We have, uh, several people who have either submitted applications to be on the roster of subs or are preparing to do that. Um, and Jim raised, Jim Coombs raised several questions about the process for actual, his actually being able to call on those people. Um, Mary and I had a conversation earlier this week, and our recommendation is that we treat this the same way we treat the roster of Fire Department volunteers. It, which is to say that the Select Board does not vote on every individual, uh, who goes through the training and presents him or herself to be a Fire Department, um, responder. And, and in the same way, um, we've asked Jim to set a training, uh, uh, the, the memoranda, app, app, checklist, uh, procedure so that anyone applying to be a select, a transfer station substitute would go through training. Jim would report back to the office that they'd completed the training and should be added to the roster of available subs. That would give Mary the authority to pay them if they wanted to be paid for the time, for the training that they undergo and the time that they work. And if that's, that's factory, uh, to the board, um, I, if we need a motion, we can make a motion, but that's the procedure that we'd like to set up and clarify that with Jim so that he can go forward and have at least a few people that he can call if somebody gets sick or there's a sudden emergency and he doesn't have the staff.
Sounds like a fine.
Yeah, I, I don't think a motion's required. I mean, I, I think they, they know what they need to do. That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, I'm, uh, then we're good with that, and I, we will report back to Jim and, um, get paperwork set up to keep a record of this.
Perfect. Thank you, Bronwyn.
Okay, so the school, uh, committee, the school board meets tomorrow night. Um, those are high-grade meetings. It'll start at five o'clock, and those are located in the school, um, uh, library, uh, if people are attending in person, and then obviously, there's a, there's a link that you can ask the district for, or, uh, Nicole Main's the secretary, um, tomorrow, if folks want to attend that. And then, um, the REC Committee held its holiday on the, at the Wharf on December fifth, or I guess that was the fourth, because the Fire Department was on the fifth. It was a busy week that week, and, um, it's very successful. Santa Claus came down. Thank you to, uh, Bob and Sharon for uh, driving Santa down on the, uh, fire truck, and for Chief Whalen making, um, the Fire Department and, uh, those folks available uh, for Santa. So, over a hundred people came, and the weather turned out, so that's my report.
And I learned that Ari is a pretty good singer with the Georgetown Jammers for the carols.
Okay, there you go.
My singing was not as good. Any questions for Aria?
Yeah, we have lots of thank yous. The Georgetown Jammers really, I think, took it up a notch.
All right, if there are no questions for Aria, I'll jump into my Town Administrator update very briefly. I wanna note that Reed Birdzel has finally signed the lease between us and Reed, and Sagatahawk County has signed the sublease between. Has signed the sublease between us and Sagatoh County. I'm awaiting a little bit more details from the county administrator on the lump sum that we're supposed to receive and when we'll be getting that. Just so we can keep our eyes forward on tracking those dollars. I do wanna also let the board know that we've made. Significant progress down at the waterfront with our rebuilding, thanks to the monies that came in from the state. There is only a thousand dollars of work left to be finished and that'll happen in the spring. So we've gotten reimbursements in now for. All but a thousand dollars worth of that project and it's come along really well. I wanted to share that I met with, Mary and I met with the fire chief yesterday. And we're in the process of working out the eventual proposal to bring to the board about having BAF. As our backup coverage in the event that a call was placed for an ambulance and we can't, or fire EMS services and can't get there. Those details are still in the works, but just to keep folks that they are ongoing. And the last thing I wanted to mention. Typically, I'm late on getting my minutes out to you guys. The day after our last select board meeting, I did minutes and all kinds of other stuff. However, I did not purchase the table from Home Depot that we specifically had picked. And by time I made it to Home Depot, that table was so popular, it's gone. And so I would request permission from the board to get a different model, roughly the same price, still falls within our budget. And I will get on that first thing tomorrow. The wall mount would be coming with that. I did follow up about delivery. And Home Depot will actually deliver it to us at no cost. So. I wanna just get on that as quick as I can, but because of the way the motion had been worded to a specific model, I didn't wanna disobey the board. So. Are we good with a different model?
How about a new motion to have Taylor buy it, Tyler buy a table, period?
That is a Dr. Seuss book. Yes, it's a second.
Alright.
All in favor?
Is three to O. And then lastly, on my report, it's just something that I'd like the board to be thinking about so we can make a decision at the next meeting. We need to decide what we are going to do with the old chairs and the table that is currently in the conference room. I personally think that the table is gonna be one of the harder things to, to remove. I think the historical society. Has some interest in at least one of the chairs. But that's not all of the chairs and as we can see tonight, we're running out of space in this conference room.
Somebody had asked about the chairs. I can't remember who, but somebody had already. Okay, so I don't think we'll have any issues.
Perfect.
Dealing with uh, getting rid of the stuff.
And the, the table almost fell apart when we moved it into this room, remember?
Guys separated down there, a couple of places. Yeah, I mean.
Say remember.
You know, it's got a lot of history, but somebody's gonna have to haul it away.
Exactly. And if, and if the board's comfortable saying that we can work that out internally at the office, I'm fine too, or. I just know we'll have a table coming pretty quick, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
By all means, work it out. I will bring in the other couple of chairs.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just didn't, it's too busy at my office today, but I will be bringing one by tomorrow. And if I can fit two in, I will.
And in talking to Stephen Mace, he did say these chairs are far more comfortable. However, the TOP MB meeting went an hour and a half today versus forty-five minutes. So comfortable chairs make that happen. That is the end of my update unless there are any questions.
Uh, I do have a comment. If you, uh, if you could address, just in case people aren't aware of when you, you, so you referenced. And we know because of our prior discussions, you referenced the lump sum that will derive from this transaction with the.
Yes.
Tower. If you could explain to everyone what, what, how we earmarked the lump sum.
So barbecue, I was just wondering if you talked to them while I was out.
And thank you, Sharon. And so effectively, when the town negotiated the lease and sublease with. Sagatoh County to erect an emergency communications tower. Barring some legal fees cost, the town was looking in the best way to protect ourselves from encumbering expenses down the road for. A project that we're kind of the pass-through on. We negotiated with the county a lump sum of thirty-three thousand dollars that will be used. To help offset taxes of that, of the property owner who was letting that tower be erected on his property. And so just to be clear on that. And just to clarify as well, when we talk about a new table, a wall mount and some of these other things. I just wanna make clear to everyone as well that it's not local Georgetown tax dollars at use. Those are federal ARPA monies that came in during COVID that if we don't spend by the end of the year. Ultimately would go back to the federal government and we wanna get ahead on a couple of projects here, not at the net expense of local taxpayers. Thank, thank you, Aria.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Mary, it is time for your updates.
Okay, so um, you guys all should have received your November thirtieth financial statements. Um, by email, if there's any questions, give me a holler on that. Um, the tax anticipation note, as you know, um, we had to borrow money to pay the county tax bill. Um, we did take two draws against that. We borrowed two hundred thousand. We have since paid that off. On the, we paid it off on December fifth um, for a total interest to the town of seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. So. Um, tax money is starting to roll in. I've already moved a half a million at BAF savings. Um, so things are looking better for me. Um, in your packet yesterday, or I sent out to you yesterday. Um, the memorandum from, that, that comes from the select board to all of the committee chairs. And board chairs regarding budgeting for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Um, what I'd like you folks to do on that is take a look at your selection representation. To the committees and see if that's something that you're interested in, um, or whether or not you wanna shake those up a little bit. Um.
Say that part again, Mary? I was opening the document.
On, on page three of this document has, has the budget committee department, the FAC and who the select and representation.
Right.
You know, the, the select and rep is. Um, lots of times, you know, the liaison is also the select, you know, the select and rep, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. So, um, just take a look at those and see if there's any you wanna shake up or if, if they're okay with you. Um. And then uh, this, the FAC is actually working, meeting tomorrow. So we'll probably do our, you know, shifting of our FAC things as well, committees. Um. So you don't necessarily need to vote or do anything on this tonight, but I would like you to take a look at the dates. Um, you know, March third for all ordinances to be in, you know, town meeting is June fourteenth. Those are, those are solid dates. Um, June tenth is a solid date. Um, but those other ones are, are pretty much up to you. But if you could look, look over. The um, schedule, the budget schedule itself and your, your representation. And you know, and we can approve it or tweak it at the next meeting would be nice. Um, then uh, as you know, we did, the town did its audit on uh, December third and December fourth. That went fine. Um, we're also working on uh, capital assets, which is a separate uh, us, we used to do it all as part of our one audit. Um, but now with the new auditors, they do it separately so that information's also gone out to them and they're working on that. Um, as you know, um, the, I'd sent out a memo earlier this month, I guess, about the. Main Paid Family Medical Lead Program, how that will be effective uh, to all employees as of January one. Um, the town has put it in budget and, and my memo states to the. Um, how this affects you, the town of Georgetown employee, effective January one. To be subject to the employee contribution under the new law. The town will cover this amount until June thirty of twenty twenty-five. We have placed it in budget. That is how we did it for budgeting purposes. Um, but effective July one, it hits everybody that gets a paycheck, okay? Um, also upcoming is, is that um, we had put out a memo that we will be doing direct deposit. As of July one, uh, July one, uh, January one, we've gotten almost everybody in. There's a, a total of fifteen people. That, that are not signed up yet. So um, that will be taken care of before they get paid. Um, and then, um, John and I had met with the cemetery. Trustees and John Wood down at, at Mountainside Cemetery, beginning or middle of November. There's a, there's a, a boundary issue with Rusty White behind it. Um, where, where uh, an old babbage post was versus where the new lines are. So John Wood had done off a boundary agreement between the town of Georgetown and Rusty White, Peril White. To shore up that line. Uh, we've received that in and we forwarded on to Kristen so that she can, she can um. You know, state anything that she wants to. Um, so I told John, and John has fixed the paperwork, so it stated twenty twenty-five for us. And uh, when, whenever we hear from Kristen, we'll bring it forward to you. Um, but John was already involved with that process. Um, we also found when we were down there a little bit, we're, we're a little bit off on that uh, between us and Shay. But we'll deal with that later. I think it's on John's new, new thing. So, um, and then the last thing for me. Is next week's warrant schedule. We will, the town office will o- only be open on Mon- on Monday and Tuesday, half a day. Um, I will need to be in here on Sunday to get payroll done in order to have it to the, to the folks. On a timely basis. I would like to have the warrant completed no later than two o'clock on Monday. Okay, so that you folks can get in here on Monday evening. I can roll it through on Tuesday while I'm here and get everything taken care of.
So Monday by two?
Monday by two, you'll probably be getting an email from me letting you know it's ready for signature, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, the, I think that does it for me.
Thank you, Mary.
Bronwyn, you all sat? Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Good, wonderful. Thank you.
Alright, and so the next item on the agenda was the fire chief update, which we have tackled, which would get us now to old business. And the first item of old business is a determination on the door repair per our energy audit. We previously determined that the town Georgetown would utilize remaining ARPA funds for projects outlined in the energy audit. And we decided the ceiling and replacement of the entryway doors was ultimately selected. We obtained three quotes from Coastal Glass and Window, Portland Glass and PDQ. I'd share that PDQ came in with a high quote of thirty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars. Portland Glass came in in the middle of nineteen thousand, three seventy-five as a total or twelve thousand for one door if we decided to go that route. And Coastal Glass and Window came in with a quote for both doors. The panic block, I'd submitted those with the memo, ultimately gonna be my recommendation, coming in at thirteen thousand, nine fifty. I would note that we have approximately ten thousand dollars in ARPA dollar, in, of, in ARPA remaining. I say approximately cuz I still need to buy that table that was sold out and I wanna make sure I give you as accurate numbers as I can. We did check and there are twenty thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars and some change. And some various facilities, reserve funds that we could tap into. The reason I really like the Coastal Glass and Window quote is it means we'd have, don't have to dip in as much. And so with that, I would turn this over to the board to make a determination.
I'm content with Coastal Glass.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, we've used them for a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah, I love Coastal, love Coastal Glass. They give a great quote and they've been very responsive uh, communicating with Tyler. And answering questions. And it appears i- as different as the, as different as the pieces of paper look. The quotes appear to be comparable on exactly the same conditions. Insulated glass, et cetera, et cetera. So if you, yes, I move that we uh, accept the quote from. Uh, Coastal Glass and appropriate remaining ARPA funds for the project. Augmented by necessary monies from office reserve funds.
Second?
Office maintenance reserve funds.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Alright, three to O. Thank you guys. And so the next. Hello, hello. And I would now bring us to the next item of business. Which is going to be a board decision regarding a request for the ATV access road on Martown Road in West Georgetown. Just to state the basics, we did consult the road commissioner and the fire chief to make a determination on safety. State statute is clear that this is a decision that the select board ultimately would have to make as the municipal officers. It's not something that could be delegated to a town meeting. We've heard by, in writing. Uh, I'd say almost a quorum of the Mar Town Road and I would say most of them are here tonight. And so. Ultimately, this is a decision the board would have to weigh and I turn this over to you guys for your deliberations.
So we've. Oh, I guess, one, we wanna make sure we know what part of it is. So we've basically. Heard that it'd be from the Sheehan's house to the West Georgetown Road and. Um, uh, as far as uh, some of the other things, uh, somebody mentioned a timeframe. Is there any? I know up north, they shut the, the roads down or the trails down at like ten o'clock. Is that something we would be interested in looking at as far as the? Or what, is there a different time that people will be more?
I, I think, you know, to address some of the uh, a couple of concerns that you passed along in letters, uh, Tyler about noise. I mean, I don't. I don't, you know, to the extent that people are, would be concerned about noise at past a certain point at night, perhaps that's something that we. Should consider, you know, for ten o'clock or, or some other appointed time. Obviously, the signage.
Right.
Has to be there. Um.
That's, yeah.
And that's something that we can get the signage pretty quickly.
Wait, um, I lost my, I lost my comment for a minute. Um. I think that the, we're being asked to do this uh, to make it easier. To move wood. As a utilitarian, not a recreational enterprise. And certainly, it would seem to me that there's no need to be moving wood after dark. That probably you're not gonna be out in the woods cutting trees and hauling them, the logs around. So I think a, a, a time frame is probably a very good idea. Also. It's hard for me reading the opposing positions of people who live on the road. Um, to make a simple judgment. And I wonder if we might want to do this, we might want to approve this uh, on a probationary. Uh, for a probationary period of perhaps six months and uh, see how it works out. If it's not impacting people adversely, uh, fine. But if some of the more. Concerned issues, the people are concerned about certain issues, if that turns out to be a problem. Uh, as I understand it, we do have the opportunity to reverse this sort of designation. At any point in time, but it, it might be considerate of the objections that have been raised. To offer it as a probationary issue. That's not a motion, that's a suggestion at this point.
I'm fine with that.
Discussion.
Um, and, and it sounded like if I'm hearing you and I think at least one of the comments that. You know, whether somebody stopped me at the dump or somebody has called me on the phone about this issue, there's been a lot out there. One of the concerns was can it be for the specific purpose? And so I throw that out there, specific purpose for wood hauling. Um, uh, or for the needs of, of Mar Town Road.
And I'm seeing in the audience, a, a game warden nodding his head, know that it can't be for that specific purpose.
So if it's just ATV access, it's just ATV access. That's fine. It is, it is what it is. I mean, that's.
I'm just bringing to you what's been brought to me.
Absolutely.
So. So in any event.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, given the stuff we just, we just went through.
Yeah, I, I would just note to the public that we noted at the beginning, public comment.
It's not a public comment, not right now unfortunately.
Another one, no.
At the end of the meeting.
Yeah, there'll be another public comment.
Well, I did not really comment on the.
Unfortunately, that's not the, the setting of this kind of meeting.
So, so we've got the route, the distance of it, uh, we know we need the signage, probationary.
Um, are we thinking until June thirty? That way we could set a date and get it on our June agenda?
That's fine. Yeah, um. Probationary, no. Um, what was the other thing? Oh, time.
Time.
Maybe even nine, it's, it gets dark at nine in the summertime and that would be, should be plenty of time to do stuff. So if we say nine o'clock is like, is a uh, um. Shut off.
So can I just make one comment on that? You have nobody to enforce that.
Well.
Unless.
That's all.
Yeah.
You can, you can say it, but.
Right.
Yeah.
If it happens to be a game warden driving around, they know, they know the force of it on the offhand chance.
And, well, and I think. Ask if folks in the audience could not talk as much cuz it's hard for the board to deliberate and hear and me hear the board and I'm taking notes on that. So. Sorry to interrupt rudely.
So Bronwyn, the, the time that uh, has been proposed is nine o'clock?
Yes, I think that's fine. And what I was going to say was to, in response to Mary's comment, uh. We don't have a constable, we don't have a police force, so none of our ordinance are enforceable in that sense. On the other hand, we have citizens who generally respect the rules. That their compatriots agree to. And in this instance, by making it provisional or probationary. Um, if the people using the ATVs abuse the privilege. The people who are impacted by that. the people who are impacted by that can report back. In other words, if people are riding around at eleven o'clock at night, doing wheelies in the middle of the road, I'm sure we will hear about it.
So are we thinking, if if I'm hearing a probationary period, I'm hearing a time limit of nine P M? And from Sheehan's house to the West Georgetown Road, do we want to say January one to June thirty and that gives us time to get the signage in with the holidays? And then it would obviously just be clear to everybody that until the signage is posted, that would not be allowed.
Now, originally, Tom had said that he was going to post the signs, but is that something that we can delegate to the community? Isn't, I mean, the the statute says that we're responsible for that.
Right. We would, we would order the signs and pay and have the road commissioner's office go out and post them.
And is that, that's something?
That's fine.
So that's, I just wanted to give enough time for that to occur by January one.
And 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 in the event the signage is not there, that folks would just have to wait until the signage comes in. But I can assure that this will be my second order in the morning.
Yeah, the statute's clear. I don't want to put anybody in a situation where, you know, it's in limbo. Um, and I think if we're gonna, uh, you know, since we're gonna do this, it, we need to follow the law so that nobody who um, is having to enforce the law, whether it's a warden or a sheriff, is gonna be in this weird position.
For a motion, do we need an actual written down uh, thing?
I I would just spell out the item, I move and then spell out the items and I can list what I have. And if someone wants to say so moved after, that would work as well.
That works.
But this would be to designate from the Sheehan House on Mar Town Road to the terminus of the Mar Town Road at West Georgetown Road as an ATV access route on a probationary period from January one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-five and setting a time limit no later than nine P M. Should we have a start time?
A start time.
Uh, six?
Six A M. to nine P M?
Excuse me? Some of us deer hunting, that's, you're cutting that pretty close. In the morning, if we wish to ride. A lot of times you can be hunting at five thirty in the morning, earlier in the season.
It's not for hunting, is it? It's for hauling wood.
It's a, it's a designated ATV route, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, but we don't have to. It's, we were asked to do this for a specific purpose, not for hunting. So the start time does not have to.
It's also just an ATV route. You can't get that specific. That's the other.
No, I understand, I understand that, John. But what I'm saying is we do not have to set a time to accommodate hunting if the purpose is to accommodate serving other community members by providing wood. That's all I'm saying.
And the kids.
This seems fair.
And what I would say is that if we're revisiting this in June,
True.
if this has been a trial period that has worked for folks ahead of the next big hunting season, I know there are other periods with muzzleloader and so on, but it, thank you.
Yeah.
And and so, you know, we could revisit and have that discussion then, but in the meantime, six to nine seems like it's most of the day.
For now, sounds good.
Yeah, I think we've got to start somewhere.
Yep.
So with all those items, again, the Sheehan House to the end of West Georgetown Road or to to the end of Mar Town to West Georgetown, January one to June thirty, six A M. to nine P M.
I think that.
So moved.
I have a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Um, I just was thinking something else, but were you gonna say something?
I was about to see if there was any, anything else about this.
No, just with the, a couple of the comments that have been addressed, you know, if you do it for one town or for one road in town, I think we just take that on a case by case basis.
Yeah.
We just have to do that. Um, this was a compelling reason and um, and a good reason, so we will go forward if we have to, if it keeps coming up in other parts of town.
Sounds good. Everybody in favor or all in favor?
And that is unanimous, three to zero, and those signs will be ordered early in the day. And so we've now concluded our old business, the first item of new business. I just wanted to have a brief discussion with the board about town report and some possible actions. The town of Georgetown, as we know, has not had a complete town report in a number of years. And I would like us by town meeting next year to have an actual town report catching us up. And the idea that I wanted to pitch to the board tonight and see if folks are comfortable and I can come back with a more fleshed out proposal would be to create a committee
Yes.
and solicit folks that would be interested in getting on the committee. I'm thinking five to seven members. I could come up with a better proposal, but if the board didn't want to go committee route, I didn't want to spend a couple of days coming up. But truthfully, there is a state law that says if we are knowingly not filing the report, that there is a penalty of fifty dollars that can be assessed. And I am now stating on the recorded line that I am trying my best to get that report in good.
We're not going to take it out of your paycheck, Tyler. It is, it is just, I, reports, annual reports are a pain to do. I have to do them myself. I'm also behind, so we're compatriots there. And I absolutely believe the committee is the way to go. It's the only way you're going to be able to be on top of it.
Yeah, we have to, we have to get it, we have to get it off of your uh, slate because more and more administrative stuff comes to you and to Mary and you don't have time to do this. So, yeah, we need, we need, we need compulsive people on this committee.
Right.
And I can tell you that I've been keeping a little cheat sheet at my desk of folks who come in and ask about the report. And I've said if a committee were around, would you be interested? Most have said no. John Hens says he would love to be on there and so that's at least one of our five potentially, so.
Yeah, and we, you know, I think that a, a lot of us have a, a lot of contacts in town that um, you know, may have the skill set to help you. Um, this is just, you know, we just got to knock this off your plate and get you some help. Absolutely.
So we will, at the next meeting, I'll hopefully have a a memo with some actions for the next thing. And the last item of business tonight, my friends, would be the reappointment of Alexandra Kelly as registrar of voters for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. That was three to oh. I would just note that we have an appointment certificate to be signed. We have tabled the abatement application, so that will not need to be signed. And the thank you letter to Senator Eloise Vitelli has a couple of minor tweaks, so that'll be ready to be signed at the next select board meeting.
Okay.
And I turn this back to John for public comment.
Is there any public comment?
So, um, I have the access route signs per the state, the ones they wanted. And I have four of them in the garage, so I can bring them up to the town tomorrow.
Perfect.
And I'll just lay them here for you guys.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
So, yeah.
I know you wouldn't cost a time a penny for those, so.
I remembered you said that, so.
Absolutely.
I wasn't counting on it. I just remembered you said it.
And and Mr. Sheehan, thank you for your diligence throughout this entire process on staying focused on the goal and we've made it to a criteria.
You guys all considering it and and working with us.
Thank you.
And as we learned, it takes a village.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
I'd just like to thank the select board for sending out the letters. I don't know if it was acquired by law, but it was very courteous of you and, but thank you.
So before I say my comment, this is passed, no matter what I say, doesn't change it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I just want the board to know that, and I, my job is not to sabotage this and that's why I kept quiet. Um, you're the first town to ever have done this in, in the state of Maine uh, with, in this manner. And it's okay. You have the complete authority to do that, um, as long as there's no public funding. Um, but the only, as I checked with a bunch of um, the Department of Parks and Lands and whatnot, it does all in for him. And it's never been done without an ATV club and without railings.
Mm-hmm.
So, not to say you can't do it and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. Hopefully, hopefully we aren't pace, you know, setting.
Well, there's, there's a lot of towns that are, that are doing this now. There's a lot of towns that are opening up every road in town.
Mm-hmm.
Or every road except for a couple.
Yep.
Uh, but don't generally have established quite large trail systems. So it is, it's one of these moves afoot that's going on throughout the state where they are expanding, need to keep moving on the roads.
Well, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anybody else? Seeing no more. I guess I would entertain a, we got no executive session?
There was no executive session and I think the last thing, John, is happy holidays because.
Yeah.
It'll be, and see you all next year.
Happy holidays.
And no snow. We, we hope for no snow for John's sake.
Yes.
Were adjourned by Aria? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we are adjourned after a vote at seven oh one.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah.
Perfect.
Night, everybody.
Good night, Bronwyn.